Let's open the meeting. We're a few minutes late as it is. It's a bit of an unusual meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, well, first we'll have our normal openings, but at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to deal with some of our regular business. But then we're going to have a public hearing on warrant articles we plan to send to town meeting in November. So it'll be a little bit of a change from normal. But first thing, we always have public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on an issue not on the agenda? No, in that case, we'll go forward. Paul, minutes?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval minutes of August 27th and September 10th with some very minor changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You'll notice that we're missing two members, but we have enough people to be able to approve things, to be able to vote tonight. So going forward, the applicant on our first matter of business is found with Concrete Corporation. This is a special permit application to allow for parking in the front yard of the manufacturing building located at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road. We had acted on this already, but now we are going to read into the record that affirmative motion. So Bob, if you would.
Okay, draft, September 13th, 2024, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Falmouth Concrete Corp. to construct a concrete block manufacturing building at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road under section 2.
I don't need to interrupt. That's the wrong motion. You want the special permit.
They were in your packets.
Oh, I just grabbed the first.
Right, but it's by chance the second one.
This is second one with you.
Yeah, we're doing special permits.
Have you got it?
Yeah, it was in the second.
Thank you.
I was going in order of the pages. Okay, draft, September 13th, 2024, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Falmouth Concrete Corp. to allow for parking in the front yard of Zero Thomas B. Landers Road under section 240, 14.15b, and section 240, 12.1, special permits of the zoning bylaw with the following findings specific to section 14.1I5B of the zoning bylaw. The applicant is seeking a special permit under section 14.1I5B to allow for 10 parking spaces located within the front yard. Building Commissioner has reviewed the proposed plans and has indicated that based on the proposed use and number of employees, possibly up to five, the proposed parking shown on the plan, 10 spaces, appears to be adequate. Finding specific to section 240, 12.1, special permits of the zoning bylaw. The planning board finds the size of the site to be adequate for the proposed use as only 51% of the site will be occupied by the building and parking areas. B, the planning board finds the site suitable for the proposed use as the neighboring property is owned and operated by the same manufacturing company and the surrounding area contains similar industrial uses. C, the planning board finds that the impact on traffic flow and safety to be acceptable as this proposal seeks to expand the existing concrete block manufacturing use from one property to another and therefore not creating new vehicle trips. D, the planning board finds no impact on the neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, as the surrounding area includes similar industrial uses and adjacent property currently contains the concrete block manufacturing use. E, the planning board finds the method of sewer disposal, sources of water and drainage to be acceptable and defers to the appropriate regulatory authorities for permitting and future connections. F, the planning board finds the site to have adequate utilities and other public services. G, the planning board finds no effect on the supply of affordable housing in town. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application for a special permit to allow 10 parking spaces located within the front yard will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter in that the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalances benefit effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, pursuant to section 242.1C2 of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval, predecessor approvals, have been met.
Second. And a second, is there any comment from the board? No, all in favor?
Aye.
And the parking is approved. And now on our second item, also for the Falmouth Concrete Corporation, the site plan review application for a 9,963 square foot industrial manufacturing building at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road. And we did have an introduction to this before, but apparently it wasn't complete. Kevin, did you want to speak further on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think we have anything to add since the last week's hearing. We submitted the revised plans last week prior to the hearing. I don't believe there's any further comment from engineering or any other departments. So I think we've addressed all of the issues in the two prior hearings, unless there's any specific questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? No, from the public? Not? We didn't think so. So we have prepared a motion expecting that to be the circumstance. And Bob, a second motion.
Draft, September 13th, 2024, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Falmouth Concrete Corp. to construct a concrete block manufacturing building at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road under section 240, 12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw with the following findings. The applicant is proposing to construct a 9,963 square foot concrete block manufacturing building with 10 parking spaces located at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road. The site is located adjacent to 475 Thomas B. Landers Road, which is owned and operated by the same company. Planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to section 240, 12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Pursuant to section 242.1C2 of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval, predecessor approvals, have been met. Two, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document. Three, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or others or public rights away. Four, the applicant shall contact the engineering division for address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit and shall then post the address for this location per section 99. One, affixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance.
Just a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? No, in that case, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
So you're all set. Thank you. So we're moving on now. This is the part of the meeting in which we're going to continue a public hearings for articles that we are sending to town meeting in November. I'd like to explain where we are in the process of making changes in our bylaws in case you, anyone here, or people at home have lost track because it's such an extended time that it covers. You'll remember, or maybe you don't remember, that the planning board embarked on changing our bylaws to update them, make them conform to current state law. And we began on this process some five or six years ago at least. So it's been an ongoing thing in which we've been assisted by very able consultants. And those consultants, one is with us in person today, Bob Mitchell is here, and our other consultant is here by telephone in case we need them. They're both experts in their field. And they have worked with a team of planning board, zoning board, the building commissioner, the legal department. I think that was it as far as official offices were concerned, but certainly it's been a planning department project to bring our bylaws up to date. And in the course of doing that, we kept finding things that were not only not up to date, but actually needed changes in order to better serve the town. So we kept putting those changes aside, calling them phase two. And so we had hit something that seemed to be too much to deal with, and we called it phase two. This is now phase two. The town meeting approved, finally the attorney general approved. Our updates, they've become part of our bylaws, but now we're moving on to changing bylaws in a way that we think are better for the town. So this is the first of those, and this is a continuing project. People who've been working on it will continue to work on it. So this is sort of the beginning of it. These were the first. We thought that some because they're the most pressing, others because they seem easy to deal with, but they're here before you tonight. So what we're doing is beginning the public hearings. If there are comments that leave the planning board or others who are involved in the project to think that we really need to reconsider what we're proposing to town meeting, we would have time to do that so that we would be able to amend the warrant before it goes to town meeting and town meeting members would be able to see what we're really proposing to them. So even though it seems that we're very close to the town meeting, there is time to make changes if change is warranted on what we're proposing. We already know that at least one of them has caused a significant amount of thought on behalf of really knowledgeable people and might have to follow a different process. If a warrant that we're proposing requires so much change that we can't make the changes reasonably between now and be ready for November, we can do, we'll just take it aside and finish it up for next April. So don't feel that even though you're being heard late, that what you're going to say won't make a difference because it could make a difference. So with that, the people who are going to do most of the explaining tonight are the town planner Jed Kornok and Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie on the telephone. So Jed, you want to get started?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. Jed Kornok, town planner. So I have, absolutely, I believe the clerk has a public notice that he'd like to read into the record.
May I?
Please.
Too excited.
Sorry to interrupt. Madam Chair, the public hearing notice for town meeting articles was published on August 30th, 2024 and 9/6/2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Now.
I'll start over. For the record, Jed Kornok, town planner. I have a long presentation, but I will try to keep it as brief as I can. I'm going to start off by just outlining the articles that we have before us this evening. And what I've put together in this presentation is sort of the high-level summary of the types of changes that the board is proposing for town meeting. But before I start, I want to remind everybody who's in the audience that there are paper copies up on the table if anyone's interested. That includes not only the article itself, but also the red lines that are associated with it. In addition to that, for the folks who are watching at home, all of the articles and the associated red lines are located on the planning board's webpage under town meeting articles. And I can show at the very end how to navigate through the website, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware.
Jed? What you can do about this, but Bob just.
So our consultant is having trouble hearing, so it's possible that he just can't hear my voice from this distance. But we can certainly try to address it after, while you make this presentation on Article 10. So we will work on getting Bob online. So as you can see up on the screen, we've got six articles before us this evening. Article 15 is proposing amendments to the Mr. Cod bylaw, which is the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. Articles 16 and 17 are essentially put together. Article 16 is proposing amendments to the accessory apartments bylaw. And Article 17 is amending the use tables to reflect the changes in Article 16. Article 34 and 35 are related to the home occupation, which we are proposing to call home-based businesses from this point forward. So as you can see, we'll be amending 249.5, but also the definition of a home-based business. So we'll get into that in a few minutes. And importantly, as I mentioned, Article 36, which is proposing to amend the non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. So there's a lot to get to tonight. And with your permission, Madam Chair, we will jump to Article 36 so we can be respectful of our consultant's time and we can start with that. And we can make our way through the remainder of the presentation after we don't deal with that. So I'm going to go ahead and pass the baton over to our consultant, Bob Mitchell. He has, as you mentioned, he's been working with the town as well as Bob Ritchie on our recodification phase two. This is one of the topics that originally was part of their first phase, if you will. And so we've spent a lot of time with the zoning bylaw working group going through all of the red lines these past few months. And we're finally at a point where we're proposing it to town meeting this evening. So I'm going to pass the baton to Mr. Mitchell, and I will work as best as I can to make sure that Mr. Ritchie can hear us over the telephone.
Mr. Nascali is getting copies that have, that make it very clear, new language and old language, because these are changes to bylaws. So if you haven't taken already a copy, you might want one. It'll make it much easier to follow. And the order that we're taking things in, the non-conforming, the one we're taking first probably is the most complicated and will take the longest amount of time. And then second, we're going to take Mr. Cod because that is, will take the next most amount of time.
Bob, can you hear us?
I can hear you just now, but I haven't heard anything up to this point.
Okay, well, we're just opening and Bob Mitchell's going to be reviewing the changes that we're proposing with Article 10.
You ready?
All set.
All set?
We are.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Nice to be back in the Falmouth Town Hall after a while away on Zoom meetings instead. So this Article 10 has been around since back in the RECODE days, but we, the zoning review bylaw working group picked it up again probably six or eight months ago to finalize a draft. And there's been multiple meetings for the last number of months going through each draft. I think we did 10 drafts. Most of it was smaller, you know, there weren't substantive changes in each draft change. It was changing some words, fixing some words, moving things and whatnot. But Article 10 is related to non-conforming uses and structures, which is pretty universally agreed upon in this state as one of the more difficult parts of Chapter 48 of the zoning act to deal with. And so the approach was to try to create an article that set, sort of set the picture of what the town was restricted from doing or what was set by 40A as in terms of what you could and couldn't do with non-conforming uses of structures. And then what the town had flexibility in deciding how they wanted to approach different aspects of this. So there's a balance between sort of the guardrails of Chapter 40A and then the guidelines that you have, you are proposing to put into your zoning bylaw section. Much of the language in this draft has been brought over from the existing bylaw. Some of it's been moved around, some of it's been saged together with other, with some new language for different reasons. But I think pretty much with really one section and one sentence that are proposed for deletion, all the rest of the existing language has been moved into this current draft.
Bob, it might be helpful for the people who did pick up copies, use the one with the red marking. The red is new, the black is already there. And if you didn't pick it up as you were listening, 40A is a state law. And you'll see that the effort here was to pick up the state law so that local people would have the two together and be able to work from it rather than have it somewhere else. So it looks as if it's new, but its source is not new as far as applicability goes.
So the first section, 10-1 applicability is really one of the most important parts of the whole topic of non-conforming, which is trying to set the stage for, you know, how the town's going to deal with non-conforming uses and structures and lots and what the state law provides for and doesn't provide for and what's applicable related to this topic. So the first 1A, that's all new, you know, stating what the state authority is, what the town's authority is, what the purpose of this section of the bylaw is, which is a common addition to bylaw articles, major articles. and then in 10-1B, these are what is referred to as the preemptive provisions of the state law. And that's basically, the state law says, well, this is what you can and can't do, and you have to abide by those, and this is what, you know, you have to follow. Now, as you can see, there's some new language there, but for the, for the, some existing language. In 10-1B 2A, there's some language shown for deletion. There is a provision in state statute that if someone files a building permit before the first notice of the public hearing for a zoning amendment, and that zoning amendment gets adopted by town meeting, that, and it would have an effect on what the building permit was going to allow, that the person with the building permit gets a 12-month period where they can use the building permit under the old zoning. But the town has a provision that says under certain circumstances, the town can extend that another 12 months. Well, the state statute says that that time limit for protective, protection from the change shall not exceed 12 months. It doesn't say shall not exceed 12 months except where the town decides otherwise. So the town doesn't really have any authority to on its own exceed that. I don't know how that ended up in the bylaw, but that needs to come out because you don't have the authority to do that.
I think in practice, it might be helpful for people listening to know that most of the buildings in Falmouth are non-conforming. This applies to a lot of things because they were here. Think of, think of how old the buildings here are. So, and the zoning board of appeals, this is the article that they administer. So because the buildings are non-conforming, if they want to do something, they have to go there. They're appealing something. And what Bob Mitchell is saying right now is if someone who owns a non-conforming building and wants to make a change and hears that the town is going to put in a new bylaw that might affect them, they would be well advised to hurry up and get it done because they have just a year before they would have to be under the new bylaw.
One of the things about the state statute is there's a lot of language in there related to single and two-family homes, dwellings. There's a lot of protections provided to single and two-family dwellings. And so there's a fair amount of, there's some existing language in your bylaw related to that, but there's a fair amount of new language because we wanted to be clear, again, exactly what the town's authority was in dealing with single and two-family dwellings that reflected what the state statute provides as to what you can and can't do. So this section has a number of subsections related to single and two-family dwelling. And then 10, 10-1C is applicability, what is applicable, what uses and structures fall under this. Again, you can see most of this language is existing language, you know, conformance with bylaw amendments. And again, much more language on the specifics of how you handle single family and two-family dwellings under this topic. And some, some specific language that's been in the bylaw that's unique to Falmouth with number seven, the height increase. You know, this is where the flexibility comes in. You have some provisions on how you handle a height increase for a non-conforming structure. You have the ability to do that. 10D, the statute refers to what? To the non-conforming nature of a structure or a use? And it refers to the zoning board making a decision based on, for example, you proposing a new non-conforming use in a place that has an existing non-conforming use. And the new non-conforming use cannot be more, substantially more detrimental to the town than the existing nine. While the state has those two terms that are used throughout the statute, they don't actually define that. And so the committee, you know, thought it was a good idea to have the town say, this is what we mean when we say non-conforming nature and substantially more detrimental. And so those two definitions have been added. Non-conforming structures, again, we're back to more language on single and two-family dwellings. And the other part about this is there is statutory time limits related to a violation of the bylaw. So if somebody has, does something that would violate your bylaw and no one complains and no one files a complaint with the building inspector within six years, then boom, they're, they're good to go. They don't have to meet the bylaw from that point on. And so that's, again, reflecting of state statute, but the committee thought it was important that that be in the bylaw so anybody reading the bylaw would understand that there's a six-year limit to file a complaint about a violation. 10-4, 240-10-4 relates to lots, lot shape and size. And again, almost all of this language has just been brought over from the existing bylaw. The only, there's some new language in 10-4A about changes in lot size and lot shape. And again, most of this is just clarifying language that the committee wanted to add in to, you know, help people understand what this subsection is referring to, changes. But everything else, with exception of some word, you know, word tweaking in 10.4 is existing language. in the existing bylaw, there is a section that is 10.4 in the existing bylaw, that is the amnesty section. And this section was adopted in, by the town meeting in 2014, and it was to grant amnesty for three years for certain actions taken by, by people with non-conforming, non-conformities. But it was only good for three years. And if it's adopted in 2014, it expired in 2017. So it has no validity. You don't want to leave that in the bylaw. So that will, that's being shown as deletion.
Do you intend to add that later on?
No, that was a specific, I mean, I shouldn't say no. Ultimately, it's, you know, the town's decision. But that was a very specific thing and it was adopted
All deleted.
10 years ago for a limited amount of time. And I certainly don't know the history of how that all happened. But, you know, the committee said, well, it's expired. We haven't used it in seven years and nobody said anything. So it didn't seem like anything and it was necessary.
It was very complicated anyway.
And that, yes, and that. So 10.5 is another, another category of non-conforming uses and structures related to restoring a non-conforming, a non-conformity, abandonment, or non-use, which are not exactly the same thing under state law and actually, you know, different court cases. Again, you, the town had some language on these, on these topics. Again, you, the town had some language on these topics. So, but the committee thought it would be a good idea to have a specific subsection on use abandonment. Okay, what do we mean by use abandonment? And what you have there in number two is what we came up with in the draft and what the committee talked about. Yes?
There's a small change in wording that has to be made there under use abandonment, and that would be one, two, three. In the fourth line down, remove from the, and you add premises and. I think that's what you were trying to say.
It just should say, has been removed.
From the premises and has not been replaced.
And has not been, yes, removed. Well, you could just say, has been removed and not.
However you want to say it, but the way it's stated.
Yeah, just take out from the has and add and.
Yeah.
That makes more sense. I think that's one we talked about, too. And I think version 11, which didn't make it to the committee, probably has that change. So, and then in number three, the, it's a mix of existing language, current language, and new language related to the re-establishment of a non-conforming use that hasn't been used but has not been abandoned. And this provides, clarifies that the zoning board has the special permit authority to re-establish that use that has not officially been abandoned, but hasn't been used for whatever, six months or eight months or something like that. And in doing so, as you can see, A through H are criteria that the zoning board would use in determining whether to approve requests for re-establishment. So, again, having something that puts everybody on notice. If you're going to ask for a re-establishment, this is what you have, these are the standards you have to meet and prove to the zoning board that you have met them for the board to approve. 10.6 is, again, primarily existing language. Findings, the zoning board, when it deals with non-conformities, if they're going to approve a change from one non-conformity to another or an extension of a non-conformity, they have to make findings, a finding, that's the statutory word, a finding, to approve it. So, they have to find that, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood and a variety of other items. And you have, under your special permit section in the bylaw, there are criteria that the board has to meet in making this decision to make a finding. And then, and then, again, this, number two is added to sort of define, okay, what does the town mean by a finding? And section two says, it's, you know, the board has to find facts in accordance with the procedures that the board already has established in accordance with chapter 48, which is the state law. And, and then exemptions is 10.6B. It's entirely existing language. There's no changes to here. And it's about, okay, you know, if there's an alteration, a reconstruction, an extension, or a structural change to a non-conforming, single and two-family dwelling, again, we're back to the single and two-family dwelling, special requirements, special provisions, again, by state law, that the town has to use in order to make determinations about what is exempt from having to go through the finding process. And so, you know, you have it listed here. And, again, that's all existing language, and it's fine language. So, it was kept.
Okay, so we've been through all of Article 10, our proposal. Are there any comments? Let's hear from the board first, from the board. Pat and I worked on this, so we've been through it before. Paul?
I have no comment.
Paul?
No, other than the typo that Pat caught.
John?
All looks good.
Paul?
Good evening. Bob, I'm at Falmouth Attorney, deals in zoning matters from time to time. I have a few comments about this post-Article 10. First thing I want to say is a comment about the purpose clause. And that's on the first page of the article. It says, "It's the purpose of this bylaw to discourage the perpetuity of non-conforming structures, uses, and lots where possible." Now, that's not statutory language. There have been statements by judges in court decisions that are in accordance with that. But we also have many court decisions where, of course, extension or change of non-conforming uses and structures was allowed. But putting that in as the purpose, that it's the purpose of this is to discourage the perpetuity troubles me. An example, the Woods Hole Golf Club, which dates back to 1899, is a non-conforming use. Golf courses are not allowed in residential districts. The idea that it should be, that the continuance of that golf club should be discouraged just troubles me. As you said, as the chairman said, it may be that most of the houses in Falmouth, or most of the structures, are non-conforming. Just think about Falmouth Heights and all of the houses that don't have a 25-foot setback. I think about many commercial buildings, which are not in a business one district and do have a setback requirement and are close to the street. We could go on and on, because there are so many non-conformances. And the idea that it's a purpose of the bylaw to discourage the perpetuity to them just troubles me. We should embrace many of these non-conformances, deal with them as they are. They are what they are, but they aren't bad. And no, they don't conform to today's requirements. But the idea that their perpetuity should be discouraged, that is, the Board of Appeals is being told in the bylaw, when somebody comes to you to make a change, is it possible to eliminate the non-conformance? That shouldn't be the, that's not the goal. It should be regulate non-conformances. Anyway, I think I've said that clearly enough.
So, your suggestion, then, just to clarify, your suggestion is it's the purpose of this bylaw to regulate non-conforming structures and uses. Is that yours?
Yes, that's certainly fine. That would be fine, sure. The determination of what is not substantially more detrimental is language that I believe in case law is the test for whether a special permit is required, not the test for the determination of, for the section six finding. And to have those, yes, we need a special permit. But then the test is whether the change, extension, and so on is or is not substantially more detrimental. And I think this language is not apt. Regarding non-conforming lots, a change has been made to 10.4B-1, in language which was confusing, saying, "No lot shall be made non-conforming." But that had a meaning. That is, what that bylaw says is if you have two properties, including two non-conforming lots, undersized lots, you can adjust the boundaries as long as the area of the lots remains the same. Make a thousand feet from one lot, add it to the other lot, and vice versa, in order to make it easier to put in a conforming septic system, for instance, or to solve an existing non-conformance with respect to a building location. In other words, you can adjust the boundaries of lots. And the bylaw, that's what that bylaw is saying. "No lot reconfigured under this section shall lose its buildable status." Okay, we're talking about buildable lots. If you have a buildable lot, and you can adjust the lot lines with another adjacent buildable lot without losing the buildable status, even though it is a new, non-conforming lot. And what that sentence was meant to mean is that by doing this adjustment, the lot isn't becoming non-conforming. But the language has been turned around to say, "No new lot shall be created." It makes it impossible to use that bylaw. The bylaw also doesn't tell us whether it's possible, and neither does the Zoning Act, though there have been some court decisions about this. If you have an undersized lot, and it is protected, it is buildable, or maybe already has been built on, and there is adjacent property that is in excess, that is, you have a two-acre lot in a one-acre zone, and next to it is a 20,000-square-foot lot, undersized. Can you take some of the bigger lot, without making that lot non-conforming? Can you take some of that lot and add it to the smaller lot, creating a new lot which is still non-conforming, but bigger than the protected, non-conforming lot you started with? Makes perfect sense that you can do that, and should be able to do that. Should be able to add land to increase the size of a non-conforming lot.
But in your example, you have enough land to create two conforming lots. Why would you not do that?
In many cases, you wouldn't. Maybe the acres, two-acre zoning, let's just say. Or you have enough land to add some without making the other, but you don't have enough land to have two conforming lots. Or an owner isn't willing to do that. That is, you have two different owners. Can I buy some of your land? I'd like to have a bigger lot. Your lot will still be conforming. Some case courts have said, of course, that's okay. But it's not clear in our bylaw, and it'd be interesting if we could come up with some language that would make that clear. I've actually drafted some language I could show you. In the abandonment and re-establishment clause, which is towards the end of section 10.5, the first line says, "A non-conforming use or structure that has been abandoned, demolished, or reconstructed, or not used for a period of two years loses its protection." I just want you to know that, that a long time ago was the language in our bylaw. But for many years, for decades, the town took out the word "structure." The state statute says that a town can regulate abandoned or not-used structures and uses. It doesn't have to do both. And Falmouth made a decision many years ago that it was going to not make a structure that wasn't used for a couple of years wouldn't lose its protection. Think about the nursing home we just dealt with on Main Street. Closed for more than two years. The use was abandoned or not-used. The structure did not lose its protection. And so, when the bylaw recodification was done a couple of years ago, those words "or" and "structure" were added, without anybody knowing that that was a very significant change. And I don't think that a structure should lose its protection, because a structure isn't used for a couple of years? Tear it down? No, that doesn't make any sense.
I have a problem with that. Bob, I could be wrong, but I don't recall that we proposed any changes to Article 10, or under its old number, any about the non-conforming bylaw. We didn't change it.
If you look, I don't think you intended to change it.
I don't think that we did.
But when it was, when it was recodified, that, those additional two words were added. And I'm quite sure I'm right. And you could there, look at the older bylaw and then look at the.
I think it would be really unique that you would be wrong. That's true, but still.
We can look into it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Doesn't take weight in your mind.
Here we are, whether, I mean, the town took the word, you know, gave protection to structures that were not available for uses. And that was actually a conscious decision made years ago. And that changed with the recodification. And it wasn't an intentional change, because it weren't supposed to be. But here we are, in 2024, and actually making, revisiting language. And so, we can do it however we want to do it. I think the way the bylaw was for decades was better.
And therefore, what would we do here?
What's that?
Say you're right. What then would you have us change here?
I would take out the words "or" and "structure, so that a non-conforming use that's not, that's been abandoned or not-used for a period of two years loses its protection, but not the structure. That's what I would do.
So, you would insert, under, this would be 24A-5A, to use abandonment, a specific non-conforming use shall be considered abandoned, but the structure will not. I don't see how we can make that change right here.
Well, let me say that I do think that the bylaw is improved by the language that's added that says, even if two years have passed, and you've lost the protection, you can get a special permit to re-establish it. That's good. And good for use. It's, if you want to leave a structure in there, it's good for structure. But the question is, should a structure lose its protection? Should it have to have a special permit to be converted to a use which might be conforming? If it's conforming and the structure's protected, you wouldn't need a special permit.
We'll take a look at that. I think what you do is you take out this "or" and "structure" up here.
Section 10.2, no, it's 10.3, starting legally, non-conforming use begins with the sentence, "No non-conforming principal use of a structure shall be extended." That's just entirely contrary to what the statute says.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow where you were. I was making a note. Where are you?
It's 10.3. It begins legally, non-conforming use. I don't think it's correct that a non-conforming principal use cannot be extended by special permit. And the language in there also doesn't allow, only allows a change if there's a finding that it's not a substantially different use. I don't think that's required by the state statute. We've had examples of a nightclub, clearly detrimental to a neighborhood with very high occupancy, being converted to multifamily dwellings. That's a conversion of one non-conforming use to another. Is that a substantially different use? I think it probably is. The Board of Appeals should have the authority to weigh the. The Board of Appeal should have the authority to weigh the detriments and the benefits of such a change, and should be able to allow such a change.
If I followed the section that you're referring, I don't see that that authority is taken away from them.
It says, "A nonconforming use may be changed to another nonconforming use, provided the board, special permit granting, or grants that the new use is not a substantially different use."
Right.
I think we should take out the "not a substantially different use" and just leave it is "not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use," so that it can be a different use. Maybe a use of a nonconforming use which is much more detrimental than another nonconforming use might be. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others who wish to comment? Jed, did you want to comment?
Well, Paul?
Yeah, I have a question. I think it's to Bob. In the section 240, 10.5, 4, refers to, shall not place destruction, greater nonconformity. How do you define nonconformity? Greater nonconformity? That's rather arbitrary, isn't it?
Paul, where are you again?
This is 240, 10.5, restoration abandonment, A, at the end, number four, just prior to findings and exemptions.
I'm at 10.5A.
Unsafe structure. Maybe we're reading different things.
In which section are you? Which subsection?
Number four.
Unsafe structure?
Right.
Begins unsafe. Well, I don't think I have any problem with a provision that regulates an unsafe structure.
How do you define greater nonconformity?
I see what you're saying.
That's why you have human beings on the board. They make a judgment call.
I haven't given that clause much thought.
Bob Mitchell.
Well, I would just say that this kind of language that's actually found in other places of the bylaw is lands in the lap of the building commissioner. The building commissioner makes a lot of judgment calls about what is safe, what is unsafe, what, you know, what buildings, you know, can be saved, what buildings need to be structured, supported. Those are all part of the job, quite frankly, of the building commissioner.
They're judgment calls. They're judgment calls. They're judgment calls.
It's a judgment call.
Right.
And, you know, if somebody doesn't like the judgment call, then they can appeal a building commissioner's decision to the zoning board. But, you know, this is just pretty kind of standard judgment call language in bylaws. And this has been in your bylaw, I'm sure, a long time. I understand that, but, you know, those of us that read bylaws all the time see, Paul, language that somebody's making a judgment, and it's usually the building commissioner.
Thank you. It's a minor point. I was just curious.
So, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate you catching, noticing that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no further comment on this one.
Shall we move on?
Let's move forward, and we're going to take next Article 15, amend Section 240, 7.5, mixed residential and commercial overlay district.
If I may, could we hang up with Bob Ritchie and allow our consultants to go home for the evening, considering that there were no outstanding questions about Article 10, or, I apologize, the nonconforming structures, uses, and lots article?
I believe so, yes. And thank you very much for making the long drive down. We really appreciate it. Right. And thank you, Bob Ritchie.
Three hours. Three hours.
Took him three hours to get here.
Thanks for joining, Bob. We will summarize the comments for the next, for the continuation of this hearing.
Okay, I did miss a great deal of that. I kept every other word from Mr. Ritchie and all his stuff.
Sure. So we'll put together, the staff will put it together in a written form, and we'll provide it to the board and to both you and Bob.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Safe home.
Safe trip.
Okay. For Jed, Mr. Cod.
Mixed residential and commercial overlay district. This is Article 15. As you can see up on the screen, the amendment seeks to do a variety of different things. The five main items here are to create some clarity and structure for what are considered to be allowed uses within the district. It will specify the allowed densities, so residential and nonresidential. It seeks to build in some flexibility for the board when you have an applicant come before you, and so we'll get into that, what that means, in a second. It articulates some specific housing provisions, which, again, I will highlight in a moment. And it also adds in a variance component for some of your dimensional regulations. So that's a basic overview as seen up on the screen. On the right-hand side is the current mixed residential and commercial overlay district, which extends from approximately St. Barnabas to the west and goes all the way up to Sandwich Road in the east. So specifically, in 240, 7.5A, in the purpose section, there were some minor changes made, and we consolidated some of the texts. So what I hope to be able to do, which I'm going to attempt to do here, is toggle between the presentation and the actual sections, so that you can follow along with me as I walk through some of these changes. So as you can see, 240, 7.5A, the purpose section, these red lines, there's a decent amount of them, but you can see D, E, and F, these three sections are proposed to be deleted. And it's not necessarily deleted, per se, but we've combined that language into A, B, and A, B, C, and D. So we've taken it from, what's that, three, seven purpose items, and we've consolidated it into four. And importantly, the first one, as many folks have reminded us, is that, you know, the intent of Mr. Cod, although initially was to reach the 10% goal of affordable housing on our subsidized housing inventory, we also understand that the housing crisis requires us to be flexible, thoughtful, creative, and so the purpose statement here is to, simply to continue to create affordable housing options for the residents who live here.
Well, actually, when we started, our focus was on multifamily housing. We didn't really have a bylaw that provided for multifamily housing, and so that's what the subgroup that developed it was working for. And it was during that time that affordability issue ballooned. So it became a focus and is included in it. But this was to provide mixed-use multifamily housing. That was the purpose. It is the purpose.
So toggling between the presentation here, so in 240, 7.5B, which is the establishment and delineation, we added some minor language there for clarification purposes. I'm just going to sort of summarize this screen, and then I'm going to bounce back to the red lines. So in definitions, in the definition section, we've added a new definition, which is multifamily development. We had multifamily dwelling before, which I'll show in a second. And then, of course, we had the mixed-use development. We made some minor tweaks to that. And then in the application section, as you can see, both the mixed-use development and multifamily developments would be allowed by right, so they would be site plan review with the planning board. And those provisions would only apply to the Mr. Cod district and not anywhere else. So it's specific to this overlay district. And then lastly, as you can see on the screen, there's a lot of new texts related to what's allowed within each one of these types of buildings and at what floor. And I should say, and just take a moment here, that we worked with, the planning office worked extensively with town council, outside council, and we used the Cape Cod Commission's model mixed-use bylaw to sort of put together these amendments that you see before you. So it wasn't, you know, in a vacuum by any means, but it was prepared thoughtfully. So I'm just going to toggle back here. So here's the establishment and delineation section, where, again, it's just some minor text that we expanded upon in the first clause. But importantly, the second clause, again, it attempts to make it clear that an applicant has an option of essentially a fork in the road. If the applicant is interested in applying under Mr. Cod, the provisions of that mixed residential, commercial overlay district apply and only apply to that applicant. An applicant can't simply apply under this and then take some of the provisions from the underlying zoning district. They have to make a choice. Or with the overlay district, or stay with the underlying zoning. And that's what this clause here, that I'm highlighting on the screen, attempts to get at. Again, seeking clarity for applicants in the future. In the definition section, as you all know, the Department of Housing and Community Development recently changed to the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, and so we had to make a lot of those minor amendments here. We added some language to indicate or successor agencies, so we don't have to keep doing this every time the state agency changes its name. And then here is the important part of the definition section that I was referring to earlier. So the mixed-use development, there's been a lot of discussion about what the words "without limitation" actually meant. So there were interpretations on both sides of the aisle on that one, so we felt it best to just remove that language, to make it very simple. It's a mix of residential and nonresidential uses. And because we've had issues in the past with commercial accommodations being combined, and that's for other reasons, which I'm not going to get into tonight, we decided it was important to put in some language that says, "They are not an eligible nonresidential use," to be combined in a mixed-use development. And as I mentioned before, the multifamily dwelling was there before, so we changed that to a multifamily development, to be consistent with the mixed-use development. And those are the two types of uses that would be allowed in the Mr. Cod district. So moving into the application section, which is 7.5D, again, this first clause just makes it simple, simple statement that both of these uses, both the mixed-use development and the multifamily development, would be allowed by right, and that they would follow the specific regulations followed within this section of the bylaw. 7.5E, this is where, as I mentioned before, this is where a lot of the new text comes in, right? So this was inspired by the Cape Cod Commission's model mixed-use bylaw, where it essentially lays out the rules for, in a, and I want to make sure everyone's crystal clear on this. So the first section, it specifically says, "In a mixed-use development." Now, a mixed-use development is, you know, it goes without saying, I think, but I'll say it regardless, it's a mix of uses. It's nonresidential and residential. And so they, being the Cape Cod Commission, outlined what would be allowed in the ground floor, and you can see up on the screen what uses are allowed on that floor and what uses are not permitted on the ground floor. And then further on, it indicates upper floor, same kind of method, what's allowed on an upper floor and what's not allowed on an upper floor. So specifically, let's go back to what's allowed on the first floor, right? That would be retail, restaurants, housing units, personal services. I won't go through all of them, but you get the basic idea. These are by-right uses that are allowed within your bylaw currently. I will make note that we probably should consider tweaking the restaurant language, because we have some, we have classes of restaurants that are not allowed by right, and some are allowed, so we would suggest making a little bit of tweak there. But the point remains that it's clear to see what's allowed on that ground floor, and you can do nonresidential or residential if you so choose. What's not permitted on the ground floor currently are parking areas, as you can see, automobile-oriented uses, and other uses that are not open to the public. So again, taking that inspiration to say, put everything, you know, all the active uses we want up on the street, and the residential, you know, typically are up on the upper floors, as what's shown here. But it's important to note that the zoning bylaw working group and the planning board, when we discussed it previously, felt it was important to allow housing units to be on the ground floor and the upper floors of a mixed-use development. So that's allowed, and I apologize in advance of scrolling so much, but it's important to highlight these particular items. So housing units are allowed on the ground floor, and they are allowed on the upper So then we get into 240, 7.5F, G, and H. So we're talking about development intensity. As you can see up on the screen, the development intensity is not necessarily a new section, but it is, it does have some new language, and it's updated. So we wanted to be crystal clear that mixed-use developments have a residential cap of 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland, and there is no current cap on the amount of commercial space. It really should say, "Nonresidential space." So an applicant can have as much nonresidential space as they'd like in a mixed-use development, but the residential component of that is capped at 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland. In a multifamily development, which is only residential use, it's a simple cap of 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland. So again, in 7.5G, this is where we get into our dimensional regulations, not necessarily new text, but we did update some of it. So importantly, the minimum lot size has remained the same. I'll get into the specifics of what that looks like in a moment. We've added two categories for lot coverage, minimum lot, or maximum lot coverage, I should say. Building height now has three categories, and this is what I was talking about before, about building in some flexibility for the board, because, as you know, the Mr. Cod district has a variety of different parcel sizes. Some are really large, some are very small, and so we wanted to try to build in some flexibility for the board and an applicant who comes before you and says, "I really want to do this mixed-use development. How can we make that work?" SEFACs and their dimensional requirements remain largely the same, although I will articulate one minor difference. And then there's a new clause that deals with nonconforming structures and lots, and they are allowed to apply for a special permit to waive the specific dimensional regulation. I'll get into the specifics of that in a second. And then lastly, the parking section essentially remains the same. So please go to the red lines and show that specifically. So here's that development intensity section. That's 7.5F. Again, won't go through it nauseam, but you get the idea. In a mixed-use development, you've got the residential cap. You have no nonresidential cap, so there can be as much nonresidential as an applicant desires. And then in a multifamily development, you're capped at 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland. And that 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland, as you know, is consistent with what Mr. Cod had before. So that number has not changed. Here's the dimensional regulations. So again, the minimum lot size remains the same. It is still held at 10,000 square feet. This is the maximum lot coverage, two categories that I was talking about before. So we thought it was important to try to provide some options here. So for a property with less than 20,000 square feet, the maximum lot coverage can be up to 90%. And then for properties 20,000 square feet or larger, it would remain the same. Your current maximum lot coverage is 70% now. So we wanted to try and give those properties that are much smaller a little bit more wiggle room to work within the bylaw itself. Then building height, this is an important one. So as you can see, in 3B, this is where we talk about the maximum building height. Your current maximum building height for Mr. Cod applicant is 35 feet. Add it in some language that allows for properties that are two acres or greater to have a maximum building height of 40 feet, and parcels that are five acres or greater to go up to 50 feet. And importantly, it would exclude rooftop items like a And importantly, it would exclude rooftop items, like as you can see up on the screen, chimneys and bulkheads and mechanical equipment, things that, you know, traditionally would be counted towards building height, but we tried to build in some flexibility there to allow for those larger parcels to be a little bit bigger, have more development Setbacks, as I mentioned, largely remain the same. The side setbacks are the same as what they were before or are currently. The change that we made to the front yard setback was saying that it shall be no more than 25 feet. So an applicant can come before you and say, "I'd really like to have the setback at zero." And they're allowed to ask for that, but it can't go beyond 25. So you give them that first 25 feet to indicate to you where they'd like to see it, and then you can have a conversation with them about, "Do you like 25? Would you rather have something smaller?" Currently, the bylaw says it can't be, it cannot be more than 20 feet. So the applicant really has to put the building right up on the street. And I realize that, you know, when you were drafting the bylaw, that was the intent, was to bring the buildings closer and the parking in the rear. This, we feel like, just gives, you know, a little bit of flexibility in that conversation. And as I mentioned before, the non-conforming structures and lots, this provision gives an applicant who is dealing with a non-conforming lot or structure the ability to essentially ask for a special permit or request a special permit to waive some of those dimensional requirements. And then parking, as I mentioned, is largely unchanged. So last two slides on mixed residential, commercial, overlay district.
Well, I think parking was changed to give us flexibility on it.
So this language that's currently here, there were no changes to it. So you currently have this language in there now. You have the ability to grant a parking reduction if an applicant provides a car-sharing program. If you're interested in some additional flexibility there, we're happy to, you know, work with you on that, but we tried to keep that all the same language. And then, of course, the non-residential parking requirement is the same. It's one space per 300 square feet of least one floor area. So in the affordability requirements, again, we just made some tweaks to the name of the state agency. 7.5J, this is a brand-new section. It talks about not allowing age restrictions in both of the multifamily developments and the mixed use developments. It also specifies the rental periods are to be no less than 12 months. So again, to try and tackle that whole short-term rental issue. Some minor tweaks to the procedure decisions and a brand-new section related to variance. So I'm just going to hit the last slide here, and then I'm going to go back over to the red lines. And then the last two sections that were added are dealing with conflicts. So the idea is, when a conflict occurs with another section of the bylaw, the regulations within the mixed residential and commercial overlay district would carry, essentially be the ones that would be required if an applicant is, you know, a Mr. Cod applicant. And then severability, that's a standard clause that just simply indicates if one section, it doesn't destroy the entire bylaw itself. So let me go back to the red lines quickly. So here's this affordability requirement. This is where we made those tweaks to the state agency names. This is the additional housing provisions, which I mentioned before. So again, for any mixed use development or multifamily development permitted through this section, there should be no age restrictions that are allowed. So it's open to everyone. And then long-term occupancy, that's the rental period of more than 12 months. This is minor tweaks to the procedure. We just made it clear that, you know, publication would be sent to the paper, minor information here. You'll see the deletion from the dimensional requirements. So all of this was folded into a previous section.
Yeah.
That's why I was mentioning, it's not necessarily new language, it's just updated. Decisions, trying to make it clear that both mixed use developments and multifamily developments would be a site plan review through the planning board. And then importantly, this variance item. So to allow for a variance for certain non-conformities, as you can see, essentially maximum lot coverage and setbacks for those properties that already are conforming. So the special permit section was for a current property or structure that is, that has a non-conformity. This is for ones that do not. And then lastly, as you can see, conflicts and severability. That is the summary of Mr. Cod and the proposed revisions. Did you want to stop there and allow for a comment like we did the last one?
Yes, indeed. First, I think we're going to take comments from the board, and then we have extensive comments from Mr. Amen that are very thoughtful, that will take a while to go through. John?
Thank you. And just a question. I think this is all really well done. Question on, on, that number 7.5G decisions that the board finds detrimental to the neighborhood. Proposed development avoids adverse impacts that the board finds detrimental to the neighborhood. Can you give me an example of what that would be? And then also, let's say the board finds it is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Can someone appeal that to the building commissioner and he could overturn it? So two things, I need an example, and I need to know if it could get overturned by the building commissioner.
Okay. So you are in, just for clarification, you're in the decision section, so 7.5L?
Decisions.
Okay.
7.5, I guess it's I or G, it says decisions.
Yeah, it's in L. It's hard to read because it's underlined, too.
It is an L, yes.
So really quickly, just repeat your question. I was trying to figure out where you were.
Under number C of that section?
Yep.
Says, "The proposed development avoids adverse impacts that the board finds detrimental to the neighborhood."
Right.
That's in the decision. So let's say that the board, first of all, I want an example of what you think the board could find to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think traffic would be probably the most concerning.
Traffic in what way?
Well, ins and outs of the driveway. Perhaps the driveway is located too close to an adjacent driveway or an intersection, and the traffic flow to and from you consider to be not safe.
Okay.
Or perhaps there's too much traffic being generated by this very large development.
Okay.
So that would have an adverse impact.
Okay.
And then the second part of the question is?
Second question is, let's presume that the board finds it is not detrimental. Can someone appeal that decision to the building commissioner?
So my understanding is that that wouldn't be an appealable thing to the building commissioner. My understanding is that that would go to a competent court, but they could certainly appeal your decision.
Okay.
But ultimately, the building commissioner, if they issued the building permit based on your approval, then absolutely someone could appeal the building permit being issued. There's an appeal process for that as well.
Okay. So they could appeal, if the building permits gets issued, they could appeal that, but not our decision, the planning board, because this is a by right bylaw.
Right. Right, so there's, you know, it's interesting, there's some disagreement on whether or not site plan review is an appealable decision. And so we're working through that with our town council's office to try and determine exactly what that would look like.
Okay.
Our understanding is it is an appealable decision.
If this isn't appealed, this is.
This is, yes.
This portion of it.
Well, your whole decision. Under site, under site plan review would be an appealable thing.
And who would have standing for that? Who do you presume has standing?
Well, and that's what we're working on. And we're trying to figure that out before we close these hearings so that we can answer that question for you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, a question. Are there any five-acre parcels in the Mr. Cod district right now?
There are several, yeah.
Okay. I would have a hard time with 50-foot height buildings.
Right. Right. And I think we should look at where the five-acre parcels are.
Yeah.
Because 50 feet is really too high.
Creating canyons at that point.
Is what it is. Pat?
I have no comments.
Paul?
No comment.
Okay. Mr., Judd, are you aware of that?
If I may, just address the comment, because I think it's an important point for the building height section. So here we go. So as you can see up on the screen, the allowance for, you know, larger or taller building heights also comes with a provision that the setbacks be increased.
Right.
So I didn't know if you had read that. I just wanted to make that clear.
One of my concerns with the buildings that tall is, can a fire department handle a five-story building?
So we've checked with them, and they certainly can, yes. Yep.
Really?
Yep. We wanted to make sure before we, you know, bring it forward, and they said they could. Yep.
I think we'll probably be coming back to that another night. What I'd like to do is give Mr. Amen, who's given a lot of thought to this section, and has tried to work with it, so he's very familiar with it, and he's given us very thoughtful comments. Do you all have a copy of them?
Yes.
I think you got them. Okay.
Thank you. I did put a lot of time into this particular article. It's one that I've had a bit of experience over the last few years that is dealing with Mr. Cod. My letter had delivered only today, is three and a half pages, a single-spaced type with a lot of specifics, some of which don't go so much to substance but to clarification, and hopefully they're very helpful. Just as an example, where a project abuts a residential property, there's an increased setback required. But the language doesn't make it clear that that only applies to the setback along that residential property, not to all the setbacks for the project. And while I'm at it on that, the words "residential property," "residential use," and "residential zone," I think are all used. There should be consistency so that it's clear whether a residential property means the same as a property with an existing residential use. Anyway, I've pointed that out in my correspondence, and there are quite a few of those kinds of details that I think will improve the article. Now, the, one of the problems with the existing article of Mr. Cod bylaw proved to be the uncertainty how to deal with a special permit use. When we applied for a Mr. Cod mixed-use project for the nursing home, we proposed a commercial accommodations use, which is a special permit use. And although the bylaw states that the planning board should be the sole permitting authority, town officials, including the building commissioner, determined that a special permit was required from the Board of Appeals. The current bylaw doesn't really address special permits for what's allowed, because what's been done is that only by right uses are listed in the compendium of allowed uses. And I think that's a mistake. The special permit uses that are allowed in the business district that maybe the Mr. Cod site include automotive services, and they include fast-food restaurants. They include commercial accommodations. They include offices for tradespersons. Those are special permit uses, which would be allowed on one lot, right next to where someone's proposing a Mr. Cod project. And I don't see any reason to not allow those to be in the Mr. Cod project. We already have apartments above at least two gas stations in town. Goni Hatem's out in East Falmouth, not a Mr. Cod district, but at Ny Road and Main Street right downtown, where there's self-serve and a convenience store with apartments above. We have restaurants that have apartments above them. There is a one-acre site in the Mr. Cod district that a fast-food restaurant developer is looking at, and I've encouraged them to also see if they can do that project, which would require a special permit, of course, but could they do it under Mr. Cod and include some housing? My point is that we really need housing, rental housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, and the Mr. Cod district on the town sewer is intended to be the site for that. I don't see a reason for the extensive restriction on what uses can be part of a mixed use development. And I've set that forth in my correspondence to you.
Bob, do you mind if we pause here? Because these two, the first two points that you're making here, one about the lots, where the front is one thing and the back is another, we need to clear that up, that kind of goes along with that. But this about picking up, don't exclude any uses that are already allowed in the underlying zoning. I've only had a couple of hours to think about it, but my first reaction to it, and continuing now, is that makes a lot of sense. What's the reaction, your first reactions to that?
To allow some of the underlying?
Not some, all. Don't make that a prohibition, that you're picking up the underlying, as I understand it, that you're picking up the underlying uses as well as the new housing residential use, the multifamily use.
But the planning board could be, still require a special permit if it's a special permit use.
Right. Because it comes to us for site plan review.
If it's part of a Mr. Cod project.
We get to review it and review that section of it, even though we don't normally consider uses. So what do you think of it?
I'd have to go back and think about what the, why we decided to do it that way the first time. I can't, I can't recall exactly why.
Good thought. Yeah, it needs more thought. John, do you have an initial?
I feel the same way. I would have to look at that. And I want to see what the uses are.
Right. Pat and Paul?
We had that committee look at, maybe they should review it again.
We could, and we're missing Jim tonight. Yeah, because of the board, the people who initially worked on it drafted it, John, myself, Jim, and Eric, actually, ought to take a look at it. But it makes sense to me, both making sure that we pick up the back of the lots that would be eligible, so that it all fits, so that it matches the map that we're handing out, and you pick up the underlying uses. It simplifies it.
I like the flexibility of it.
Right.
And if, as long as we have some say in it.
Well, we would.
Yeah, if we're the permit-granting authority.
Because remember, 545 tripped on exactly this.
Yeah.
That's what happened to it.
I have to just make it clear that 545 did not trip on that. 545, it was a complicated case that dealt with a provision of the bylaw that had specific rules about how to use a piece of land and to calculate the number of rooms. So it is, in my opinion, not an apples-to-apples. It's much more of a fruit salad.
There were more things to it, but one of the problems with it was the business of the commercial accommodation joined to Mr. Cod. And could you do that without a special permit for which you had to go to the ZBA? So now you've got two boards. You can go hunting for the answer that you want. If tell on parking, I mean, there are other things about it, but that was one of the major ones. I shouldn't have said it was the only one.
It's fine. I think what's important to identify, too, or to just bring I think what's important to identify too, or to just bring out, is that your underlying zoning district already allows those things by either by right or by special permit. I think the major hookup, or the major hiccup here is that it doesn't allow for residential density at twenty units per forty thousand square.
Right. That's what we're adding.
Which is the item.
But we should make it cleaner that that's... What we're doing is we're adding that. We're not trying to also subtract a bunch of stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think to your point is, you know, Bob and Jim have mentioned, really carefully looking at what those underlying uses are and thinking about if you were to combine twenty units per forty thousand square feet with whatever it may be, is that truly something that you want to allow for?
Okay, so we're all going to think about it, but this... Okay. Yeah. Just wanted a minute to do that. Thank you.
In general, and on the same theme, I just think there should be much more flexibility to encourage the creation of housing. I think that all of the details of what can be on a ground floor, what can only be, what can't be on a second floor, it just... We don't have those restrictions now in those districts where we can have housing, not twenty units per acre, but I think the planning board can, you know, through the permitting process, whether it's site plan review or in some cases a special permit, can direct the... What ends up getting built under site plan review? You have design review authority. To restrict yourselves, to restrict the planning board as to what can be on the first floor, what can be on the second floor, I just don't think there's any need for that, and it's not helping us. That won't help us get more affordable housing downtown.
And you point out later that there's no consideration in what is currently proposed, that Jed just went over, is given to the possibility of what I would... You're calling it a lower floor, a basement. Undoubtedly, such a structure would have a lower floor, would have a foundational basement to it.
I want to point out that the language about non-conforming structures, this is your proposed section 247.5G5 expressly prohibits a Mr. Cod redevelopment of an existing building that's not conforming as to building height. That can't be intended. That would have prevented the 545 Main Street project. There may only be one other, I think there may be only one other, building in the Mr. Cod district existing today that is already non-conforming as to height, but that sentence just doesn't make any sense, that it's a non-conforming structure. Want to do something good with it, you should be able to do it. You should be able to do a Mr. Cod project. Again, it probably doesn't matter much, except one thing I want you to hear and definitely need to take action about is that, as you know from the discussion tonight about non-conforming uses, if one has a special permit or a building permit issued, and the zoning then changes, if you don't exercise the rights, if you don't begin construction or exercise rights on a special permit within twelve months, you're subject to the new bylaw. The nursing home project was approved by the Board of Appeals on June 4. If a year goes by without beginning construction, it will be subject to this bylaw, and it can't meet the requirements of this bylaw. You must include a provision in this bylaw that says that it does not apply to a Mr. Cod project approved prior to the effective date, approved by a special permit, for instance, prior to the effective date of this bylaw. You must do that to protect the nursing home project, because it is probably going to take beyond June 4 before they can break ground because of the state permitting and financing. They may make a June date, but things are always delayed. So, you don't want that result. Nobody would want that result. I think that the limit to ten thousand square feet probably should be lower, that is, the minimum lot size. The present bylaw says there's a minimum of four dwelling units in a Mr. Cod project. I don't think that's in the new bylaw. Rather, there's a reference to multifamily housing, and it's in three. In any case, an eight thousand square foot lot would be big enough for four at the Mr. Cod density of twenty units per forty thousand square feet, and a six thousand square foot lot could have three units. So, one can certainly imagine a mixed-use project, or if it was just three units, that's good, too, but a mixed-use project on a relatively small lot on the sewer with three or four apartments and non-residential use on a first floor. I think that that would be a change in the bylaw, which presently says a minimum ten thousand square feet, but I think you ought to consider that. Again, the goal is to get as much housing in the Mr. Cod district as we can. Maybe there'll be a time when we have enough, or we have too much, but we're not anywhere near that yet. There's a section, new section, that gives the planning board the authority to grant a variance and then limits what you can do, and tells you how to grant a variance. I don't think you can do that. I think that the planning board can be the variance granting authority, because the state statute, 48, section 10, simply refers to the permit granting authority. Our bylaw presently says that the zoning board of appeals is the variance granting authority, so I think you need to go to that section and change that if you're going to give yourself this authority. But I don't think 48, section 10, allows the town bylaw to change the criteria under which a variance can be granted. It's shaped hardship, financial or otherwise, based on due to topography, soil conditions, or shape of a lot or structure, the statute says, which is hard to understand a little. So, I think that's a mistake. Furthermore, you go on to say we can't grant a use variance. Well, we know that. State statute's very clear that a town has to, by its town meeting, has to give the town a right to do a use variance. Anyway, the point is, I think your section on variances is unnecessary, should be reworked. I gave you some language in my letter that would make it clear that the planning board is the authority for a variance as well as a special permit were needed. I wouldn't mind if the Board of Appeals remains the variance granting authority, because I think that's going to be rare. But I think that, say, you can't get a variance for a building height when there's a building height problem that's due to the topography of property, there's no sense in that. You have the authority to say yes or no, but don't limit yourself in this bylaw. So, there's more in my letter. That's plenty. The issue about protecting the Galasso project is really important for you to be sure if this is going to pass the legislature.
Bob, thank you very much for putting in so much time for us, and it's going to take us a while to absorb this and react to it, but we will. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Peter Freeman, representing Kimco, the owner of Falmouth Plaza, and that is a site which is very much, I think, ripe for this type of redevelopment under the Mr. Cod, and we had some problems with the existing Mr. Cod and did work with Jed, and we appreciate it. I thank Bob also for his thoughtful comments. I only got involved in this in terms of the most recent bylaw draft recently, so I didn't send anything in writing. And by the way, Donnie Low from Kimco is here, Kimco Realty, if you have any questions about, you know, in general, their concepts and why we're making a few suggestions. So, a couple of things that are really just, I think, clarification, and Bob covered some, but at the very beginning in 7.5B, when it first says in section one that you can just stay subject to the existing zoning bylaw, and then it goes on to say an applicant shall have the option, I just think would be clear as after the first number or paragraph, you say, provided however, an applicant shall have the option of applying for site plan review pursuant to the zoning controls set forth in this section. And if you do that, I think you can just strike the next sentence, because it says all complying with the applicable zoning controls set forth in the zoning bylaw for the underlying district, which is what the previous paragraph already said. So, it doesn't dramatically change anything. I just think it's clearer. But I would also add in the section on applying for site plan review, I think I would also say and may also apply for special permits for the dimensional reef allowed... relief allowed under section 240-7.5G5, because that's an additional special permit that one can apply for. I don't think it's critical, because it does state you can do that later, but I just think right near the beginning of the bylaw, it would help clarify. Then, I think the intent is that when you talk about, in section 7.5E, use regulations and principal structures, these regulations shall govern the uses allowed in mixed-use development, and the way Jed described it, I understand, the Falmouth Plaza, of course, right now is all commercial, and it will wind up, we hope very much, with, under this bylaw, as some new substantial housing, but keeping a lot, maybe renovating, but some of the existing buildings. I assume, I guess this is for Jed, that that would qualify as a mixed-use development?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then, really echoing what Bob just said, his critique is broader, but I agree that I think it's unnecessary and potentially limiting to get into uses that are allowed and uses that are not allowed on ground floor, in particular for our type of development, where, as you know, high-quality new apartments generally all over the place, including on the Cape and in Massachusetts, you know, they have amenities such as recreation facilities and things like that. So, in the section on upper floors as an allowed use, it says semi... These are allowed, semi-active amenity uses, such as accessory communal areas, amenity areas, or services for building residents, which would include, I think, a health club and perhaps other community rooms. So, it's ambiguous, though. It creates an ambiguity, because if you keep these distinctions, on the uses allowed on the ground floor, it doesn't list that. It's not excluded on the ground floor list, so it's just not clear. So, of course, the easiest way would be to do what Bob said, just get rid of those limitations or descriptions entirely. And again, that does affect totally acknowledging it, my client's proposal, because, you know, they don't want to have, you know, a health club that's on the, you know, on the second floor. You know, you want to put those on the ground floor, things like that. Then, the two things that are potential deal breakers for the project are the prohibition, that same section I was just talking about, right now on the ground floor, it prohibits parking, and we aren't really talking about a parking garage likely, but we are thinking, and it would help take away more asphalt, perhaps, on the rest of the site and parking, which can be unsightly if we're not allowed to have parking under the structure of the building. We would screen it, adding provisions about generous screening, things like that. It wouldn't just be plain open air where you could see the cars substantially. But again, in particular, if you do keep these categories of allowed uses and not allowed uses, it's very important to us to be able to have parking on the first floor of the actual building, and, you know, totally amenable to reasonable but healthy, robust screening requirements, be they structural screening, materialist materials, and/or landscaping. So, that's one that's very important. And then, because it's an existing site, on the lot coverage, which overall is, you know, pretty generous, seventy percent for a site that's over five acres, and ours is well over five acres, but the seventy percent, right now, we're actually eighty-ish, maybe a little within eighty percent, so we would like it to be amended that for our situation that is pre-existing non-conforming, we wouldn't be allowed to increase beyond what we have, but that we would be able to keep it as of right, as opposed to being able to apply for a special permit. It does provide that we could apply for a special permit to waive that greater than seventy percent coverage, but we would much prefer to have it as of right without needing to not know after months and a long time of planning and expenses and the time going through permitting that, uh-oh, you know, we designed it with somewhat over seventy percent coverage. So, those are the points. I think I covered what we wanted, Donnie. If you have anything you'd like to add, by all means, and we certainly can answer questions as to our desires and thought process, and thank you very much.
Sir, I think that you've sent us a memo that covered part of what you said, but not all of it?
Donnie sent that. Did you refer to a written memo that was submitted?
Then it's...
Yeah, I think Donnie Low submitted to Jed. Somehow, I kind of was bypassed in that process, but yeah, that covers these points.
It's really helpful to have it in writing.
Oh, sure. No, I understand. That's why I started off saying, I apologize, I just got involved recently, but you're right, I should have referenced that Donnie Low did work with Jed and submitted something.
There's time.
I have a question.
Okay. Pat?
Mr. Freeman, you're asking for greater than seventy percent coverage and for garaging below the building. I am curious that if you get garaging below the building, let's let alone the lot coverage, is there a possibility that you can do some green space around there so that people can have benches, that they can actually sit outside with trees and grass?
Yeah, that's a good question. Donnie, you may have a better idea, and Donnie is both developer and architect, so well-qualified there.
Thank you. Donnie Low from Kimco Realty. So, the response to that is generally yes. We actually have green space, benches, sitting areas around the building, and when we do a building, it's... Our typical is a luxury product, and it's actually expected to have a lot of greenery. We do typically do lead silver level, which, you know, there's an indicator that a lot of green is already involved. In this case, this is a difficult site, because we do have an agreement with our neighbor, which is the former Christmas shop, Christmas tree shop owner, to not modify the parking to any degree that affects him. So, on the retail side, which is everything west of Staples, essentially, everything's staying the same, and as you know, there's a chase ban coming, which gets plopped right into the middle of the parking. That will have some green around it as well. So, but for our building, we definitely, in the front of the building, we have a full landscape package, some... Because there's a slight hill, there's some tiering, and we were proposing amenity space out front to keep the street active and not just have blank residential windows there. And as we were saying earlier, the parking aspect, I think we're going to need every bit of it because of the reg... Because of the agreement with the neighbor to keep his parking intact, we have shared parking. I don't think we'll be able to reach an acceptable parking level without parking on the ground floor. Now, it wouldn't be under the building. Under the building, I believe we have fairly shallow groundwater, so we can't do it.
It would be on the ground.
Yeah, it would be on the ground.
Ground floor.
Well, that's what I meant, ground floor.
Yeah, yeah.
So... And I'm sorry, this doesn't exactly apply to the bylaw we're discussing, but it does apply to it, too, because I'm trying to figure out by this discussion what we might be able to give or take, or how it could be restated to get other desirable effects that we might want. And it's sort of like Bob Amen said, too, don't cut off your nose here.
Well, one way is to stop listing all of the allowed uses, because then they're the ones you didn't think of yet.
Right. Right.
Right, so the long lists are a problem in themselves.
So that, you can see why I'm diverging a little bit to see what the parameters might be here.
So, just to go back a little bit, the ground floor parking would be vital to this building, because we wouldn't be able to spread it out across the whole site if we put a building, we have existing commercial that we can't touch, be long-term leases, and then obviously, all these coming in, they have their parking we can't touch, so it'd be vital to have a ground floor parking, which we can shield effectively, we can make it look like units, we can make it look like accessory, we can make it look like anything you want, but that would be vital. Now, part of that is, if we take the substantial part of the ground floor for parking, it does force the issue of having the height that's considered in this code, which is four stories, because if we were having, if we had ground floor parking and only two stories above it, there would not be enough units with the 25% affordable to make the building viable, it just wouldn't pencil. So, due to the site constraints between the ground floor parking and the limited number of units we can get above, because we're sandwiched between Starbucks and the residential, and then there's a wooded lot behind us, we're confined to a small box, so it does force us to go up to get the adequate amount of units with ground floor parking, to reach a number where the project could pencil.
How high?
Four stories.
Four?
Is that based on the 70% lot coverage?
That, we, right now, the building we designed has not hit the 70%. We're, I think we're at 85, we could bring it down to about 80, so it is an improvement. However...
I was thinking if the footprint was expanded, that maybe you could have more units at a lower level.
I'm really constrained by the site on, I think we've maxed out our footprint. You know, we're also considering there's a DOT traffic circle that might be going in front of the project, so we can't pull it all the way up front. And then we have Starbucks, which is a long-term hold, as I understand, from that owner, and the wooded lot is by the same owner behind us, so we're not going anywhere there, and then we have the residential housing to the south. So there's really no, there's no expansion, and the rest of the center is leased long-term, so from Planet Fitness north, everything's essentially locked in, we can't do anything about it.
Now, does, do the FEMA maps and the flood zones and things like that have, how close are they to this parcel?
The far west edge of the site is in a flood zone, but we're outside, we're building outside of it.
Okay. Because I was going to say, underground parking kind of makes sense when you're that close.
It is, but it won't be underground.
I mean, well, under, you know, for a story.
For four, right. John?
If this gets approved like this, would the under-the-building parking be for residents only, or would it be general parking? Because you do have an agreement, you have an agreement with your neighbor, you said.
No, it'd be residents only, because there wouldn't be enough to go beyond the residence, so I know your code is stipulating one per unit, however, we really see it as a little higher, because we're not, we're not in a fully urban environment, most people have cars, and we actually try to get 1.5, and it's interesting, different parts of Massachusetts, some people push us 1.5 and higher, and then some push us lower, but we, as a company, we feel we need to hit somewhere around 1.4, 1.3 at least, preferably 1.5 if there's room. So, under the building wouldn't get us to, I don't think it would even get us to one, we still have some parking behind the building.
If it is for residents only, how does that affect your parking agreement with the Christmas tree shop?
As long as I can park the substantial amount of the building in, underneath our building, we do have a lot behind, so we've designed it so between us and the wooded lot, there is some surface parking there.
That already exists there?
Yes, it does. So where the Staples is right now, that would be parking.
Okay, and I just want to mention that it's a great discussion we're having this evening, we're having, whatever comes of all of this, it does have to pass town meeting.
It does.
So I want to, you know, make everyone aware of that, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I think what you have in mind there is the difficulty with the height, is that right?
Well, it could be, I don't know.
Paul?
I appreciate your comments, and from Mr. Amen as well. I had a question, it's not really related to the subject here, but Kimco has a major property in town, and one of the things we struggle with, we're getting proposals piecemeal, and we haven't seen what the overall plan is for Kimco, for that area. It would be very, very helpful for this board to look at what it is you're trying to do, and how it fits in with what we think is appropriate for the town of Falmouth. And I realize it's not the purpose of this meeting, but if you could think about that, Mr. Lowe, it might be helpful for this board.
Yeah, I could shed a little bit of light on that, so what I do for the company is, it's a very small component, so.
We're not here to talk about an individual project.
Just a suggestion.
We're trying to get a useful bylaw, right, all accomplish our purpose, and we know that you're representing a major landowner there, which is really good, but I don't think we ought to stray into negotiating for the project. I think that's a bad idea, right? So let's not do that.
On a future day.
Perhaps, perhaps, and I agree with you, more information is always helpful, but that's not what we're doing right now. So, but, and you have sent us your need, you didn't mention the part about hallways?
There was one clause that said there's no hallways on the upper floor, I think that was just a drafting error.
So let me ask you a question. I think, were we to take the advice that we do not list uses like that, all the different function areas that are allowable, once we've stopped doing that, we don't need to include more, we need to abide by the not naming them and wait and see what is proposed, and let the site plan review process be one of determination, right, rather than the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Freeman, was there more you wanted to say?
Yes, it's not necessarily about the drafting, per se, but I just remembered something that, I forget, I forget which gentleman asked the question, I think it was Mr. Drooly on what might be, he asked Jed, what might be an example of a detrimental use, and again, I don't know if there needs to be some revision to avoid what I say is a potential problem, but your example of traffic safety, if a curb cut or an aisle or something like that is unsafe, yes, I would agree that that, I believe, could be considered detrimental, but since there's density and quite high density allowed, you know, I don't think that it would be a valid finding to justify a denial based on finding of detrimental, because 20 units per acre create X traffic trips. I mean, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, we pretty much can all calculate, going to that book, what the likely traffic volume will be, so I think it would create an internal inconsistency, and we hope that we don't have an issue like that, but that a board like yours could be overturned if, you know, somebody's proposing the density that's allowed, which by definition, all traffic engineers would say it's going to have X volume of vehicle trips per day, if you make a finding that that's too many and it's detrimental, it's inherently inconsistent with allowing the density in the first place. So I don't have a proposed solution, happy to talk with Jed about it, but I just wanted to mention that to you folks.
Thank you. Mr. Amen?
Well, following up on that, the decision says that the board must find that the proposed development avoids adverse impacts that the board finds detrimental to the neighborhood. That's a harder standard to meet than a special permit standard. The standard in a special permit is that the adverse impacts do not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the neighborhood or the town. It's too easy for somebody to say something's adverse. Every building, you're going to look at it, there's some noise involved, there's some light involved, there's certainly, as just discussed, traffic involved. It needs to be a balancing act, and this language doesn't let you consider the balancing that the, so I think you should change that language, and I think it is the solution you're looking for on these issues, that avoids adverse impacts that the board finds outweigh the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the board tonight? Because we'll have time to be thinking this over and come back to it. I really appreciate the time and thought that you have given to this, and your willingness to work with us on it, thank you. Bob or Arthur, did you want to say anything about this?
Not right now, no.
Do you have copies of the...
Yeah, we did.
Of all of them?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I would love to understand better the intent behind the relationship between the height and the size of the lot, what the thinking was there, and also in terms of the wording with the setbacks, it seems that what the setback wording does is allow taller buildings to be set back further from the road, but it doesn't require that. Is that the intent?
It's all about aesthetics, very much so, so it's in the appearance of the thing. If you're going to have something that it, I'll answer first, and then others can give it a try, that is outsized for our town now, how will that impact it visually? We don't have any five-story buildings, I don't think, no, none, and do we have any four-story buildings?
Hospital.
Hospital might be four stories.
And the hospital certainly has big setbacks, so.
Is the Admiralty out?
I don't believe so. The Admiralty is three stories, but one is substantially below grade, kind of, they wound up with the topography that allowed them to shield that third story. So we started out with...
I think the senior housing is four stories of a building. I know it is.
Oh, it's four stories there. Okay, so four stories wouldn't be new, but it would be new in the downtown area.
I would just like to remind that whatever in the future gets proposed, if it's large, it has to look good.
Good point there, that was quickly said, and pushing things back diminishes the effect of height.
There is something else that we were talking about, too, when we were talking about the heights of the building, as you heard, they're getting closer to the street, and I hated the wind tunnel effect in Boston. I don't want to see that here in Falmouth, that you walk down the street and you're just being buffeted by a hurricane of wind, held in by these four or five, whatever story buildings. And that did come up when we were discussing height of buildings.
So I will make one comment, if you don't mind, and it has, and I know Mr. Amen, I think in his letter to you, did discuss parking and some ideas with respect to possible reduction, and give yourself a little bit more flexibility than is in the current draft, and I would just urge the board to consider ways that it might be able to grant a waiver in addition to just the car-sharing program that the current draft provides.
Right, not bind it in that way.
Give yourself a little bit more flexibility, I think might be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment on this?
If I may?
Yeah.
Really quickly, so you had asked a question about how many properties are over five acres, and how many are over two. So very quickly, over two acres, there are 15 properties within the Mr. Cod district, and over five, there are only five properties, of which one is the 300 Committee T-Ticket Park, so it would not be an eligible redevelopment, so you're really down to four properties that are over five acres.
And what are they?
So you have 13 Davis Straits, which we've talked about before, 137 T-Ticket Highway, which I believe is the Stop and Shop Plaza, and then 20 T-Ticket Highway, which I'm having trouble locating in my mind. Give me one second.
At the 99? Oh, can't be, that's not, 20, it'd be coming this way.
The Falmouth Mall?
Well, one of them is the Falmouth Mall, which could be 137 T-Ticket Highway, and then 20 could be the Stop and Shop, 20 is the Stop and Shop. So I have them reversed.
Right there, but at some point, when the town extends its searing, it will include others, because I think the way the wording was on passing Mr. Cod, as soon as business districts are seared, they would then fall within Mr. Cod.
We'd want to double-check that, but yeah, I mean, I remember the limitation proposed at town meeting, which brought it down to only properties that are seared, but I didn't follow whether or not there would be a provision that would allow for when sewer expands, you automatically get included, so.
Certainly it was discussed as the intent.
Okay. Worth a watch. There's nothing like watching town meeting.
Can I make one more comment, please?
Yes.
Just want to remind everyone that one of the real benefits of the Mr. Cod bylaw is that 25% of the units that get built are rented to an affordable rate, which could easily be workforce housing. So it's not just apartments, it's not just housing, 25% of it is going to be, have a deed restriction to it, so.
Right. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to a couple of the others. I know this is a lot to cover, and it's sort of dense material, but would like to get through it if we could. Thank you. We exhausted their patience.
So quickly, I will summarize Article 16, and we'll move on to 17, and then we'll finish out with our Home Occupation, Home-Based Business.
Okay, I wonder if we could turn down the air conditioning, it's really actually cold.
You want it cooler in here?
Oh, no. I think it's cold.
Really?
It's blowing right down on us here.
We need to change seats.
It was a fluctuating situation in here. So, very quickly, as you are all familiar with the passing of the Affordable Homes Act by state legislature, it made some important changes to the accessory dwelling units, which are in our bylaw, essentially accessory apartments, and I'll go through it very quickly, up on the screen, you've got five main topics. First and foremost, as I just mentioned, you know, we made it important to clarify that accessory dwelling units in our current situation are accessory apartments, so they are one in the same. It also allows accessory apartments to be developed by right, so there's no longer a special permit requirement, but I will just asterisk that, we're going to come back to that whole special permit item with the accessory apartments. It does remove the owner occupancy requirement, it increases the allowable size of the accessory apartment, and it changes the parking requirements. So really quickly, we'll go through what those look like. So to make sure that our accessory apartment bylaw conforms with state law, we made some minor changes to the purpose statement, we made some changes to the definition section that will be consistent with the language in the act itself, and then importantly, the requirement section had a lot of items, as I just went through, but importantly, the details of which I did not mention. So one in particular is the allowable size of the accessory apartment. So currently, your bylaw says it's 800 square feet or 40% of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. The act itself increased that minimum to 900 square feet or 50% of the principal dwelling. So a minor change, yeah, Joe?
Is it either-or, like if the primary dwelling is 3,000 square feet, going to be 1,500 square feet?
It's the same...
Or is it limited to 900 at max?
It's the same principle, so it's 900 or 50%, whichever is less.
Okay.
So it's same kind of thing, it just increased us a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It did add some important information about access and egress to the accessory apartment, so before... So before, you know, there was essentially, you create an accessory apartment and you don't have its access through a principal dwelling. The law changed that and allowed for that to happen. I did mention I wanted to come back to the special permit requirement, so the second bullet on the screen, the law provides for more than one accessory apartment to be allowed on a site, on a property, only through special permit. Now importantly, the law didn't say how many accessory apartments a lot can have, but it did say anything over one, or essentially two or more, would need to be done through a special permit. So we've modified the language within the bylaw itself to reflect that. And then in the design standards, you know, we did some moving around of some of the language to make it clear that the parking requirement was not part of the design, it was more of the requirements. Clarified some language in the procedures, and we removed importantly, the monitoring component and the enforcement sections. So what I'm going to do is the same magic trick as I was using before, and we will go through each one of these very briefly. So Section 9.1 is your accessory apartment section. As I mentioned, that purpose statement has a little bit of tweaking to it. The basic principle is to allow for some diversity in the housing stock, not necessarily for specific individuals, but just for everyone. What we keep seeing, as we have been reporting, is that accessory apartments are consistently being built for family members, and that's what we see on our end. So again, just allowing for some diversity. The changes in the definition, as you can see up on the screen, it essentially is language that is taken directly from the law itself. As you can see, that's underlined in red. So again, just trying to be consistent with what they have pushed forward. And then in the requirements, this is a lot of the information that we've already gone through. The accessory apartment are allowed by right. Anything over two requires a special permit, that would be through the planning board. The lot size remains the same.
John, could we go back a minute? I just noticed that I was going to miss the section. In Section 249-1B definition, you'll notice in the language picked up from the state, accessory dwelling unit is what the term is, and yet our 9.1 is labeled accessory apartments. Everything I've seen in the newspaper reporting on this new state law has said accessory dwelling unit. I wonder if we'd be well advised to use that language so that it's not confusing to people.
I mean, it's certainly an option. I prefer ADU because it is, you know, a term that everyone else uses, which we try to limit the amount of changes that we made to it to be consistent with what folks in town already know about accessory apartments. So I'm open to whatever you suggest.
Well, I think they have knowledge from a couple of places. Those who've gone ahead and built something under the law, under our bylaw, might know accessory apartments. Those who have not, who are the vast majority in town, know what they read in the paper.
That's fair.
I think that ADU has become a commonplace term...
Yeah.
Instead of saying accessory dwelling unit.
Sure.
So I just think we'd be better off either putting in a parentheses next to accessory apartments, or calling it accessory dwelling units, ADU. John?
I have a different question than that, but...
Oh, okay, so that's the only point I want to make right now. John, do you want to...
Does the new state law allow the language that we have in here for coastal pond overlay districts?
It does not prohibit it. There's nothing in the law that says you can't have what you have in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. What it does do is it takes out that language that we required owner occupancy.
I understand.
And so you can see that up on the screen, number three is crossed out. That was the provision that, you know, an owner had to occupy the unit for seven months out of the year. That's been removed. Also, in addition, as you can see, number four, the requirement that not both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment can be rented at the same time. Again, strict that language, or stroke that language. But we did keep, as you can see, this rental provision that requires rental periods of six months or more, because the state law did allow for that to be included, right? So they still, they wanted the communities to have more control over the short-term rental issue.
Right, and we have in parentheses so-called summer rentals, and it could also include right next to it, with quotes around it, short-term rentals.
Right, right.
Just because it's the popular phrase.
So in number five, that's where you see the additional square footage and the percentage increase. I do want to highlight one important item that I personally felt was important, was to strike the language about how you calculate that square footage. And the reason we are suggesting that is because we have run across that issue with a number of applicants not understanding what that means, their structure not fitting into that category, and trying to figure out how we fit that square peg into the circle hole and vice versa. So we just felt it was important to just strike the language. Someone gives us floor plans, it's fairly easy to calculate square footage on a floor plan, and I think we can make that happen as your staff.
I think every single application we've ever gotten in, there's an issue with calculating the square footage. It's very time-consuming.
Yeah.
And it's not fun for the applicant nor staff, so I'm very happy about that change.
Yeah. And again, I think this is meant to make it an easier process, right? I mean, that's the whole spirit of this, so that's the suggested deletion. Number seven is the language that I was talking about before, so it allows for access. Did you have a question?
There's a correction on number seven. From the outside or through an entry hall instead of of.
Good catch.
Chicky, chicky.
Good catch. So it allows for access in a different way. Before, it was not allowed to come through the principal dwelling, so there's some changes that have been made to that. Again, consistent with state law. And then, John, to your point earlier, when you were talking about coastal pond overlay and the Water Resource Protection District, we've run across this internally a couple of times, where items, as you can see up on the screen, the New 10 and New 11, specifically the New 10, talked about restrictions within both the coastal pond overlay district and the Water Resource Protection District, yet then the following sentence was the Water Resource Protection District left out of that. We discovered that that was an error, a typo error, and no one had caught it before when it went to town meeting. So those restrictions were meant to be for both districts, and so we've added that language to make that clear. And that is in all, all in number 10. And then importantly, number 12, which is a new section, the state law made some changes to the parking requirements. Now accessory apartments are only required to have one parking space. There is an additional element here, so any accessory apartment that's within a half-mile of, as you can see, the language here is a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, they are not required to have a parking, to have a required parking space. So, you know, you may be saying, well, why do we have this in here? Well, there are some situations where in town, some properties will be within a half-mile of, say, the bus station, so they would not be required to have a parking space. Now, we did add some language here that says, you know, the required parking shall be located on the property, right? So trying to make it clear that, you know, parking within the street or any town right-of-way is not allowed, is that you're supposed to get your parking or your vehicle off the So this is what I was referring to before. Item C was in the design standards, that's the parking requirement, we moved it up to the requirements. And then we made some changes to, so let me scroll up so you can see, the procedures. So items one and two before used to be, so if you were an attached accessory apartment, you did site plan review with the planning board before, and if you were detached, you had to do site plan review and special permit with the zoning board of appeals. That's all changed. It is now just site plan review in both situations with the planning board. And then lastly, the two items that we struck were the monitoring and the enforcement. I'll start with the monitoring. So the monitoring was based on the fact that, you know, the units couldn't be rented at the same time, that the owner occupancy requirement was being adhered to. Obviously, those two things have gone away, therefore you no longer need the monitoring or the affidavit that was previously required. And then the enforcement, you know, upon, you know, reading this with our town council's office, I mean, it's essentially a duplication of an obvious statement. So the building commissioner obviously has enforcement powers through the zoning bylaw, so there's no reason to have that language in the bylaw itself. So that summarizes the accessory apartments, and I'm going to jump to Article 17, if I may. So that... All over the page here. Article 17, because we have changed the byright use, or I should say, the special permit use, it used to be the detached with special permit. So this is a very simple change in the use table. It would occur both in the agricultural districts as well as the single residence districts, where before it, up on the screen, you can see the attached was yes, and the detached with special permit, we're striking all of that, and essentially now it will be listed as an accessory apartment, or perhaps an accessory dwelling unit, and they will all be wise. So within the single residence, all wise, and in agricultural, all wise. So two-part article that deals, or two articles that deal with accessory apartments, 16 and 17.
One final question. I know it struck out the monitoring, but what about the six-month minimum? Who's going to monitor that?
Right, so we will likely be monitoring that through the short-term rental bylaw. So if that's passed at town meeting, the Board of Health will be issuing licenses, and we'll know exactly where those are occurring. So if they are occurring within the accessory apartment where they're not supposed to, then the Board of Health would be tasked with enforcement.
Okay, and I misspoke, I have one more question. What happens to all the previous accessory dwelling units that we've approved and have been built? Do they now apply, are they going to be under the new bylaw, or do they have to live under their previous approved bylaw?
That's a good question.
Do they come back in and redo it?
Yeah, I wouldn't think that we'd want to have them come back in, but I'm guessing the question you're referring to is, you know, the monitoring requirement, the owner occupancy requirement.
Exactly.
I would imagine that they're no longer held to those standards because state law has changed.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to, want to hear it out loud.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Probably someone should send them a notice.
Yeah, it would likely be part of, you know, if, once this passes town meeting and it becomes effective and all of that, yeah, that would... So the building department just, you know, revamped the way they send out those notices for the affidavits, so it just so happens that they have just sent those items out and have started to receive some back. So we'll work with them to send out the notices to say, you know, this is no longer required.
Okay.
They could all add a 10 by 10 addition to it.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, and coming up...
Public comment?
Mr. Arment.
I have a question, and John probably knows the answer of. I've read the act, but just forget this detail. Is the 50% of the primary dwelling in the statute as well as the 900 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. It's so unfortunate, because it's really a penalty for the owners of small homes. If somebody has a 1,000-square-foot home, well, they can't have a 900 or 800-square-foot accessory dwelling. They may be on a large lot, it's just as, I think...
Wait, why would that be true? Why, they have a 1,000-square-foot home, and they can have an ADU up to 900 square feet?
Or 50% of the floor area of the primary dwelling.
Up to 500 square feet with a 1,000-square-foot home.
Oh, I didn't read it that way.
It's the same as it is now. It's the same as it is now, it's just whichever's less.
Yeah, I think that that 100 square feet, that 10% makes a big difference, but it still isn't, it doesn't seem right to me, but the state says so.
Does the new house say whichever is left?
Yeah.
It does. Oh.
Well, somebody with 3,000-square-foot house could have 1,500-square-foot accessory unit, so that's why.
I think it's also worth stating, in that example, that, you know, they're also allowed to have multiple ADUs. So, you know, in a situation, I guess you could have more than one. So it's, I think there's a lot to be ironed out with, if we're able to.
Question, when we get...
Yeah, oh, we're there now, we're coming in.
Okay, we're moving on now to Home Occupation.
That's 34, and on our agenda it says 35.
Yes, that was a typo on the agenda.
Okay.
Things have moved around a little bit with the warrant, and we were slow to catch up. My fault. So Article 34 is amending Section 249.5, our Home Occupation, soon to be called Home-Based Business bylaw. So as you can see up on the screen, it was one of, and Charlotte, you mentioned this before when we opened a public hearing, this was one of those low-hanging fruit, if you will, items. When Phase II items started to, you know, when the group was starting to look at Phase II items, this was looked at as one of the easy ones. And the zoning bylaw working group has met several times on this bylaw and these amendments, and we're happy to bring it forward because it's sort of been one of those languishing items. But very quickly, you can see that the name would change to Home-Based Business. Now before, what we have currently is a Home Occupation, and then we have a Home-Based Service Business, and those are two different things. Home Occupation's a byright, Home-Based Service Business is more of a special permit, and there's a lot of criteria for the ZBA to consider when issuing that special permit. That would largely remain the same. The only change here is that we're calling it one thing and saying, here's a byright Home-Based Business, and here's a special permit Home-Based Business. And then the idea is to essentially, as you know, limit the impact to the neighborhood, but also allow property owners to have a business on their property. It's not detrimental. Okay, so very quickly, the purpose section is entirely new, and so I'll show that in the red lines in just a second. The general requirements, again, the idea is we've eliminated two of the sections, so you'll see that merchandise, quote-unquote merchandise, and negative impacts have been eliminated, and we've rearranged some of those items. I'll get to that in a minute. And then in the special permit required section, that's where there's some new language that articulates clearly that the items before that section are allowed by right. It removes some language that dealt with non-conforming lots and structures, because, again, it would be through a special permit process regardless. And then there's some language in there that we, you know, tossed around a bit with the working group related to how the ZBA would look at the cumulative impacts of Home-Based Businesses within a centralized neighborhood. So it was really difficult for them to actually achieve that, and so some of that language has been deleted. So let me jump right to that. Here is our proposed Home-Based Business bylaw. So again, as I mentioned, purpose statement is brand-new. We didn't have one before, and it simply articulates the ability for a property owner to have a business on their property, but also respect the neighborhood, the quality and the character of the neighborhood, but to pursue their economic goals. Here's the general requirement section, I'm just going to zoom out a little, because this is where we did some tweaking and some deleting. There we go. Hopefully everybody can see that. So here's where merchandise and negative impacts were deleted. The idea was this general requirement section is related to a Home-Based Business that is allowed by right. So essentially, something like an attorney's office, an accountant, some sort of use that isn't necessarily known to the residents in the neighborhood, other than a sign on the outside of the structure that indicates that someone's having, that someone has a business there. So it's very low-impact, you wouldn't know that it's there, there's not a lot of traffic, there's no extra employees that are coming to the site, so it's minimal impact to the neighborhood. We've kept the gross-floor area requirement, so it cannot exceed 30% of the gross-floor area of the principal dwelling or the dwelling unit itself. And then we just rearranged things. So we made outward appearance, the first item, as you can see, gross-floor area follows that, traffic and parking, and then... that, traffic and parking, and then employees. Then into the special permit required section, again, this is the next level up, if you will. So home-based businesses that exceed the stipulations within the previous section would be required to get a special permit with the ZBA. And so we've added a clarifying paragraph here at the very top, which simply articulates that. Then in the criteria section, those are the first two items that I spoke of before where we're deleting the requirement to get a special permit for a home-based business that's located in a non-conforming lot or a non-conforming structure. The thinking of the group was, well, they're already seeking a special permit, there's no need to articulate that they need another one. They're already required to file one with the ZBA as-is. And then as you move through the remainder of the bylaw, there's really not a whole lot of changes. There's some clarifying text in here. We tried to make it very clear, but somewhat flexible for a home-based business to be allowed by special permit and not, I guess, overwhelm the character of the neighborhood. And lastly, this is the item that I was talking about before, so I'm just scrolling down quickly. This is the item related to how the ZBA would consider the cumulative impact of multiple home-based businesses within a neighborhood. So, you know, there was a lot of discussion, Charlotte and Pat, you probably remember this, about, you know, the last person in applying for a special permit for a home-based business would be penalized based on the fact that they're the last one in. It may not be a realistic situation that the ZBA could actually assess whether or not, you know, there's an actual impact based on the number of businesses that may exist. Some of them may be by right, and they're just not aware of their existence, and others may be totally benign. So it was a clause that is recommended to be deleted by the working group.
Jed, something I didn't notice before, I don't know why. At the very beginning, under purpose, I'm not sure what it should be, but you see the heading, when it gets to be special permit required, it doesn't say, for the first section, where you don't need a special permit, it doesn't say by right.
Hmm.
And yet that was the intention, and it would be easy to add it.
It would be, yeah. So by right, general requirements or?
Right. Home-based business by right.
Yeah. Yeah, I could see that, adding clarity.
Any other comments?
No.
Paul?
I have one. Why does article thirty-five require two-thirds majority of town meeting vote while the other articles only require a simple majority?
So article thirty-five is definitions. So are you saying that article thirty-four indicates that it's a simple majority?
Well, article thirty-five here, and two handouts here, says, prove this all requires a two-thirds vote. The others require a simple majority. I'm curious why.
Oh, okay. I see what you're getting at. So the recent legislation that was passed, I believe it was the Housing Choice Bill, reduced the requirement for any zoning bylaw amendment that dealt with housing specifically to reduce that voting requirement to a simple majority from a two-thirds. So in this circumstance, because home-based businesses are not a residential component, it's not a housing bylaw change, that would be a two-thirds vote. But a Mr. Cod, because it has a housing element to it, that is a simple majority.
Well, the others are simple.
They passed it to encourage municipalities or to allow for municipalities to essentially pass amendments that encourage housing and specifically affordable housing. So reducing that voting requirement makes it easier to do that. That was twenty-nineteen-ish, 2020, somewhere around there.
So of the ones that we're taking, if they all go to town meeting as we planned, then the Mr. Cod and the ADU provisions.
Simple.
They are a simple majority, and the others are two-thirds.
That's correct.
I think we got there.
Did you want me to go through non-conforming again?
No. Is there anyone else who would like that?
Only if you get the participants back here.
Yeah. I'll see where they went.
Okay, planning board discussion comes up next. Thank you. You know, the slides that you've made, whoever made them, both your department made, are really clear. They're going to be very good for precinct meetings because it's a lot to go through.
Yeah, recognizing the fact that there are six zoning articles, I think what I'm going to do is like a video, just explaining it verbally, so that it's much easier for people to not have to read every sentence, so that I can just sort of summarize it.
Right.
So Melinda's drafting the script as we speak, and then, you know, I'd be like the Sean Connery of zoning amendments.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they'll be very, they'll be good for the precinct meetings, which will be coming up, planning board discussion. First, the planning department report.
We just had it.
Yeah, I think so, but maybe not. In fact, they had a whole parking thing going on, parking that was really interesting. Yeah.
So, yes, so last week, I think it was last week.
Thursday.
Hopefully, it was last week.
Thursday.
We had our parking management public meeting, parking management plan public meeting, which was really well-attended. We were super excited about the attendance. We had over 30 people attend, and we talked a lot about utilization, the analysis that our consultants have come up with, the peak month and the peak time when we saw the most amount of parking. But the basic takeaway was that there's still capacity within our system, and we can use it better. And so they drafted a few recommendations for us to consider, one being, you know, which got a lot of discussion, was the whole idea of bringing back paying for parking in the downtown. We've realized that that's going to be an uphill battle, but it's a conversation worth happening. And so they are taking in all of that feedback, and then they're going to be finalizing their report for us. So we should be seeing a final report by either the end of this month or mid-October. Super exciting.
Well, and now the recommendations are on the website.
Yes, everything's on the website.
We can see them. Did you look at them?
What's that?
The recommendations about parking?
I did not, no, haven't yet.
Oh, well, they're there. You might want to take a look.
Did you send them to us?
No, they're just up on the website.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
But Pat and I went to hear the presentation.
Yeah, I was going, but at company.
Oh, oops.
It really was excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first statements they made were the most startling, that we have plenty of parking spaces, that was that.
I've been saying that forever.
Yeah.
Well, so there's a caveat there.
But you have to walk to them.
Yeah.
Who's going to do that?
We've got plenty of capacity in the study area, and the reason I say it that is because there's two different types of parking. There's the private parking and the public parking. So what we're seeing is that there's a lot of capacity at certain times in the outer lots of the public parking, but there seems to be consistent capacity within the private lots. So one of the recommendations is to get together with the private landowners and see whether or not we can talk about shared parking. And then ultimately, look at some of these satellite lots, like Lawrence School, Mullen Hall, advertise them better, and then use some methods from other communities who provide shuttles, wayfinding, paths, you know, there's all sorts of recommendations that make it easier.
I think John doesn't have much conviction that this will happen.
I think I've heard this all before.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Still.
Question.
Paul?
The subject of parking meters come up?
It did.
Not as meters.
Because at one point, the police chief, I think, was talking about meters, you can program it from your phone and everything else, and I was curious what would happen if you went to the vineyard and you just call in and say, well, another half hour or something.
Get out of Woods Hall, half of them have hoods on them. They're not even operational.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
They're broken.
Yeah, they're broken.
None of them work.
None of them work.
The new-fangled ones.
And, you know, what I just said to John, how many times I just jump out of my truck and run into the post office to something, and I'm going to have to worry about paying a meter or run into the hardware store for 10 minutes? I mean, we took those meters out for a reason, but it's not on the agenda, so we shouldn't be talking about it, so.
Well, it's part of their report.
Well, but it's not.
So how about this? Very quickly, I'll just remind everybody where to find the information.
Yeah.
So on our downtown parking management and wayfinding signage plan project webpage, on the planning's webpage, here is the final presentation. So this is what was given by the consultants at the meeting, so you can click on that and go through the entire presentation. And then these two items, which we thought was a really cool idea, was a voting exercise about the recommendations themselves. So each participant got a sleeve of, I think, six stickers, and they got to go up to the boards and say, this is what I really like, and they could vote, you know, on all one recommendation. But Paul, I thought of you because the first recommendation, which is right here, which I'm circling, is the Chivriks Pond path that runs all the way up to Lawrence School. So the idea would be to, you know, have Lawrence School as a satellite lot, have a path that comes right by Chivriks, maybe have some fishing poles ready for people to use on their way.
Some kayaks.
Exactly. I mean, why go to downtown? You could stop right at Chivriks.
Swan boats.
John, you have a kayak.
I have one, yes.
Billy, hurry up, I'm getting older.
We're moving as fast as we can. So all of the information's here, and it's really cool, so I encourage people to check that out. Also, FCTV recorded the session, so if you happen to go to their page or the YouTube channel, you can watch the entire presentation there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you do anything else?
Yeah.
Committee reports, any committee reporting? No, guess not. Announcements, future agenda items, general correspondence, I don't know, you hit the Kimco thing. Next meeting, September 24th?
Yeah, so I think it's worth talking about, especially considering what we heard tonight. So your meetings, you're somewhat constrained. So your next meeting's the 24th. Charlotte, you and I had talked about potentially adding in an additional meeting for October 1st, and the reason for that is because the following meeting will be October 8th. That's the meeting at which you would need to close the public hearing, and you would need to vote the recommendations for the warrant, because then we have to give it to the select board's office, and it has to go into the paper. So I would recommend that you add October 1st as a meeting date, based on what we heard tonight, because there's a lot of comments.
And Pat will chair.
Yeah. Yeah. So that would give us an opportunity to not only take in those public comments that we heard tonight, give them to our consultants to review for the non-conforming, but also to potentially start making some draft recommendations for the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, which sounds like, I think, we've got, we've got a lot to do there. There's.
We've got a lot to do on Mr. Cod. I'm not sure we're going to get it all done for the November, at the town meeting, we might not be able to make it, but I think we should try.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'll give a shot at trying to, you know, see what I would do based on what we heard tonight.
Yeah.
And the material that we got, and I'm sure you will too, and we'll all look at it and see where we are.
So considering all that, October 1st is okay with the group? I realize that that's a meeting every Tuesday, but we want to make sure we've got enough time.
We used to do that.
We used to, back in the day, yeah, every week, yeah.
I have two hearings on October 1st.
You have another hearing?
You got two.
I'm on the commission, I guess we have two hearings.
The Cape Cod is the, oh.
Yes.
Can you come to this one?
On the 1st?
Yeah.
Their meetings are during the day.
Ah, so yes, okay.
Only if you serve dinner.
Pat will arrange for it. Right. Okay, we're good. So I move adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.